All right, welcome everyone. We're about to get started here. Just getting attendance done. So here we got Boyer. Right. I think that's everybody and Nick just. Okay. All right, well, welcome, everybody. Looks like we probably could get started here. I know for those of you who are in fourth block, we did American slavery in the American South, but. For those of you in sixth block, did we do the panic of eighteen nineteen already? Anybody? Sixth block people, can you hear me? Ethan, can you tell me, did we do or Boyer, can you tell me, did we do the panic of eighteen nineteen yet?
Uh, hold on.
Yeah, I think we did.
We did, okay, all right.
Yeah, we're on slavery in the American South.
All right, good deal.
Yeah, we did panic.
Just wanted to be sure we were on the right spot here. All right. Okay, so um. This is a very important topic. It's kind of like we discussed in fourth block, this is the great national sin. Of our country, it's it's the kind of the open psychological wound. That a lot of people still feel is is very much unaddressed. And you could you could see that this past summer in the George Floyd riots. There's talk, you know, and action, actually, you know, in in recent days and months about possibly doing reparations. For for slavery. But a lot of people don't have a real good grasp of what it was really like. So this is. Our attempt to kind of bring that home to you a little bit. And and show you the the true kind of nature of of slavery in the American South and in the slave trade. So. Slavery. Was the backbone of the southern economy, it was, there was. Oh, I gotta admit Dylan there, right? And Elizabeth too. Dylan, Elizabeth. And. You know, by eighteen oh eight. There wasn't any new slave, there weren't any new slaves coming in from Africa because. The international slave trade was banned after that point. Or or the importation of slaves was banned after that point in our constitution. And I know people in fourth block already know the answer to this, but people in sixth block, oh, why do you think? The United States would be okay, or or that southerners in the United States would be okay with banning the importation of new slaves after eighteen oh eight? Anyone? All right, well, I'll just open it up to anyone, then. Why? Why would? Okay, go ahead. Oh, I see hands. All right, I'm just, I just had this pulled over, so I couldn't see hands. Ethan, go ahead.
Uh, mainly because there are already a considerable amount of slaves. In the American South that they could simply just continue generations of them to keep up.
Okay.
Demand.
Scott.
And possible resale for additional profit.
Scott, what were you gonna add to that?
The slaves could reproduce.
Yes, okay, so there were enough new slave children being born. And Kenzie, it looks like they already said what you were gonna say, so yeah. But Kenzie, if you have any additional detail you wanted to add, feel free. All right, well. Yeah, and and so slaves are. Being. Bred rather than, you know, just, I mean, there are some slave children that are born out of. Unions where people are choosing to to be with each other. But there are many instances in which masters are forcing. Certain men and certain women to, you know, breed essentially so that they can get a strong field hand or, you know, etc. You know, they're 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 treating it almost like people do when they breed animals. And of course, this is one of the many ways in which slavery is inhuman and wrong on so many levels. And so. That basically is kind of. You know, why, why the 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 South felt like they they didn't need to be bringing in any more people from Africa. But. I want, yeah, go ahead, boy, what were you gonna say?
Did they practice like eugenics then, like if a baby had like a defect or something, would they like get rid of it, or did they just?
Like if a baby was born with, say, for instance, like a club foot or something like that?
Yeah.
I don't think there's a a set policy. I don't remember reading about there being any set policy like. You would see, for instance, in like Sparta, where, you know, like a baby that was born deformed would be left out in the elements to die. But that may have varied from plantation to plantation depending on how cruel or nice quote unquote. The masters were. But. The masters had the power of life and death over their slaves and really, there's no repercussions. That they could kill their slaves. And Dylan, I see your hand, but before I answer you, or before I let you ask a question. Anybody, why would? Actually, I just lost my train of thought. Sorry there. But yeah, go ahead, Dylan, what were you gonna say?
Um, I just joined. So did they choose certain slaves to be the parents because of aspects like strength and all that?
Yeah, it it's like when you are like, for instance, breeding horses or something, and you want a certain quality in a racehorse. You're like, okay, we're gonna definitely, we're gonna breed this guy because he's a really good racehorse, he's doing, he's winning a lot of races or something like that. Same sort of mentality. So it's hard to wrap your head around how people saw things, but it's all about money to them. And. The 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 master-slave relationship, trying to understand that, because it is hard, you know, some some slave masters presented themselves as kind of in this very paternalistic sense, like they were. Taking care of their slaves, like their slaves were almost like their children or something like that. Especially you especially see that in a lot of primary sources, but we have to, you know, look beyond the primary sources written, it's mostly by whites. And and look at the ones, the few that we do have that were written by people who were slaves, who are black most often. And and kind of see the other side of it. What is the the emotion, the driving emotion behind? Slavery, like what is the, what's at the very core of the master-slave relationship in terms of what motivates slaves to work? You know, for their masters. Go ahead, Max, I see your, and then Kenzie, you're after him. Go ahead, Max.
Fear.
Fear, yeah, okay, it really is, it's it's if you don't do X, you will suffer Y. Kenzie, what were you gonna add?
Oh, I was just going to say fear as well, and if you didn't do certain things, you would get punished for it.
Right, so that's that threat is always hanging over the heads of. Slaves, and this is something that is has been discussed by scholars, you know, like how in the world? Could such a small population of whites have such control over such a large population of of slaves? Like, we're talking three point two million slaves in the South by eighteen fifty, and the white population is just a very tiny fraction of that. And it does go back to that central like emotion. But for those of you in fourth block, you already heard this, but for those of you in sixth, you haven't had a chance yet. But I'll just open up the floor to anybody. What, how does the fear get like, you know, just kind of burned into people's souls? Like, why aren't there more slave rebellions? Yeah, go ahead, Nick.
From a young age, they instilled it, they would like force them to watch, of course, like the whippings and the beatings and all that, and it just instills this like trauma in fear from a very young age to where they just don't want to rebel and they just fear that to their very core. It's like a part of how they see life and everything within it, it's just there, a part of them.
Yeah, yeah, very good. And Zach, what were you gonna say?
Seeing the effects of these punishments on the other slaves that maybe like their friends. That would just make an intense fear of that happening to themselves, especially when they see people they love getting whipped in the back with metal, like leather. Whips with metal spikes on the end, they would just make them so scared that it's gonna happen to them that they wouldn't, they wouldn't want that to happen to them.
Yeah, I mean, you both raise excellent points, and Mary, what were you gonna say?
A lot of it was systemic as well, like the government had a lot of laws in place to keep the slaves in line.
Yes, yes, very true, and that was to prevent rebellions, and of course, we're gonna be talking about that, you're anticipating something we're gonna discuss in just a little bit. You know, cuz that was a fear that whites had, that one day. You know, like in the middle of the night, the the slaves on their plantation would come into the house and they would murder every white person there, because that does happen in some slave rebellions. And so. Yeah, there is just like, but going back to what Nick said, this is childhood trauma. For young people who grow up in the system where they're essentially watching people that they know and people that they know and love. Being savagely beaten and whipped, because they, when there was a flogging for whatever infraction, oftentimes it was a very small one, cuz the. The people who ran the slaves out in the fields were the were the most cruel, you know, the the master could kind of instillate himself by being, you know. Not doing any of this personally, but by having his his field people go do it instead, but. They would stop everything, everybody would stop what they were doing, they would all come and that person would be. You know, basically have their hands tied, usually they would sling a rope over a tree branch. And that person would be stripped down and just savagely beaten, and so watching that over and over and over again as a child. Just drove this 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 fear deep down inside of people. And. So fundamentally, that's that's where the relationship is 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 kind of forged, because. The life of a slave is not a not a pleasant life, it's a very, very difficult one, and to get people to accept it and to do what you want them to do. That kind of has to be there at the at the very core of it. Now. There's other forms of violence, there's other forms of of exploitation, one of which is white masters. Basically just raping their black slave women. And producing children through those unions. And so that, in addition, is another part of this, and of course. Those those children who have a mixed heritage, do they get better treatment? Do they, since, I mean, obviously, this would be like a daughter or a or a son of the master, wouldn't they, you would think they would get, you know. Better treatment, maybe even not be considered a slave, since that's their child. Zach?
Didn't they just like, wasn't the only benefit that they got to work inside the house?
Yeah, there's still a slave for your whole life. No rights, no, you, the the expectation is you will work from sunup to sundown, six days a week until you die. Or until you're too old to work. For the rest of your life, but at least you don't have to be out in the fields, you can be in the house and do household chores rather than be out in the field, so that was kind of a. You know, something that people would obviously prefer, you know, cuz the backbreaking work out in the out in the sun in the fields was was definitely very difficult. So that is the 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 reality of of slavery, so life on the plantation. Is is just. Brutal in the extreme in so many different ways. And and many slaves just got so used to the rigors that. They just, they adapted to it. But think about this, working out in the fields from sunup to sundown, or often longer than that, fifteen to sixteen hours a day, six days a week. And sometimes during harvest season, it it became seven days a week, and that would, it would be sixteen to eighteen hour days. And. The, you know, women who are pregnant still had to be out there and work, children were given little chores to do, you know, like weeding and and carrying water out to people and things like that. They lived in in huts with dirt floors. Like, if you're working that much. Even if you get a day off on like the Sabbath when it's not harvest season, what is your? What are you gonna be doing with any free time that you have? Anyone? Go ahead, Kenzie.
Resting and sleeping and just trying to recover.
Yeah, I mean, it's it's just the exhaustion of 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 this, and. Here's the thing, a lot of slave owners are basically, they're they're trying to. Maximize the amount of labor they get out of their investment in each slave, because, you know. In a perfect world, they would, you know, they would buy more slaves, so it wouldn't be as much work for each person. But there's all of these other financial pressures, etc. And so the way that they would often solve their problems was to just engage in what we call hard driving of their slaves, and they would work slaves. I mean, literally, almost beyond their physical limitations, and so. The the life that people lived on the plantation was just incredibly difficult. And. Because this, you know, is going to really wear on any person and make them not want. To continue on in in such a in such a manner and just such a like a drudgery of life. It often became necessary for the people who drove the the slaves out in the fields to. To. Motivate everybody with. Fear, you know, and 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 so acts of incredible cruelty took place on a regular basis. On plantations all across the South, whether or not the master tried to kind of style themselves as a nice master, so to speak. But let me, I I played a clip from this. This movie, actually, it's not a, it's a clip, it's the trailer for a movie, which I highly recommend. It's called Twelve Years a Slave, it's actually based on a primary source. A a free black man in the North named Solomon Northrop was kidnapped and sold into slavery. And was there for twelve years as a slave before being able to return to his family in the North, and that experience was written down, he was literate. And he was able to write down his experience, and so we have a firsthand account of just how degrading and how awful slavery is, so. Real quickly, I wanna play this trailer for you, and if you ever have time to see this movie, it is a a very vivid, powerful picture of what this was like. And this is something that we're all still trying to wrestle with and understand this this part of our history, so here is Twelve Years a Slave.
I wanna ask you what part of the country you come from.
Originated from Canada.
I guess where that is.
Well, I know where Canada is.
I've been there myself.
Well, proud for a slave.
Solomon Northrop is an expert player on the violin.
I was born a free man, lived with my family in New York, been good for your mind until the day I was deceived.
To Solomon.
Kidnapped, sold into slavery.
Well, boy, how you feel now?
Name is Solomon Northrop, I'm a free man, and you have no right whatsoever to detain me.
You're no free man, you're nothing but a Georgia runaway.
Went down to the river Charnak.
And that servant.
I don't obey his lord.
Shall be beaten with many strikes.
That scripture.
The condition of your labors, it's all wrong.
They're my property.
You say that with pride.
I say it as fact.
Man does how he pleases with his property.
You come here.
I say come here.
Days ago, I was with my family, in my home, now you tell me all is lost.
If you wanna survive, do and say as little as possible.
So I rise.
Well, I don't wanna survive.
I bought a year, friend.
I wanna live.
I don't, you know something?
I did as instructed.
There's something wrong, it's wrong with the instruction.
Master brought you here to work, anymore I'll earn you a hundred lashes.
I know what it like to be the object of mass's lash.
In his own time, good Lord, manage him all.
I will survive, I will not fall into despair, I will keep myself harden till freedom is offered to me.
If I was a free man, I'm not a slave.
Um, yeah, just an incredible story, and of course, there's other movies, and I mentioned this in class in fourth block, that also depict. Some of the the more horrific and cruel sides of slavery, such as Quentin Tarantino's Django. Which gets into the practice among some, not all, some. Slave owners of using certain slaves as as gladiators and and basically betting on them. They they would have them fight to the death, they called them mandingos, and so. You know, and and again, like Zach mentioned just a little bit ago, some of the instruments used to instill this fear were medieval in in their. Construction, a cat of nine tails, if you're familiar with that, is is a whip with little bits of metal, sometimes glass as well in it that would tear skin. Sometimes people would have their back muscles so torn up from a a flogging, as as this is what is depicted here is a flogging, and this, of course, is a. I believe the name is Whipped Peter is the name of this picture, but it is the picture of a of a slave who has survived a flogging, and and this is all the scar tissue. From it, but. Yeah, go ahead, Nick, what were you gonna say?
Um, how prevalent was like suicide in the slave community, cuz I know this is like, it just, everything seems hopeless and terrible all the time, so was that a very common occurrence, or was it?
It was actually, it was actually more common among slaves who were brought over from Africa, even during the Middle Passage, they would, there, I I remember a number of stories from primary sources where. Slaves would would just basically tip themselves overboard, rather than live, they would just drown themselves, they would just go overboard into the sea, because they kind of knew where they were headed. Because they knew freedom before, so if you had a taste of freedom and then you were put into this horrible life. The temptation for suicide would be very powerful, but among those who grew up as a slave and never knew anything different, it isn't as common. And I'm just speaking from the primary sources, we don't have. A real like accurate way of looking at that, because again, people just didn't keep records, a real good records of those kinds of things, since slaves were considered property and masters could do whatever they wanted with them. And masters had, to a certain extent, had to protect their investments, because if you spent three thousand dollars on a field hand and you pushed that field hand so far. That they committed suicide, you would lose your investment, and so there was a monetary motivation for masters not to overdo it, etc, etc. Boyer, go ahead, you had your hand up next, I know you put it down, then put it back up, but go ahead, what were you gonna say?
Um, was it normal for just random people who weren't plantation owners to own like one or two slaves just as servants, or was it pretty much exclusively just big plantation owners?
No, that's, there there were, there were slaves that were owned, like you remember how we talked about Phyllis Wheatley? She was owned by a family up in New York City, and she was just a house slave, so yes, that was a common practice. The earlier you go in American history, the more common it is, the later you go in American history, the less common it is in the North because of the growing moral repugnance of slavery in the North. As people became much more religious during the Second Great Awakening and were less likely to. Feel like that it was, it was a morally acceptable acceptable thing to do to own a slave. Did that kind of answer what you were saying?
Yeah.
Okay, um, Valencia.
I I was just gonna say that I know a lot of slaves refused to commit suicide because they were Christians and didn't. And they believed that that would send them to hell because it was a sin, so they wouldn't commit suicide.
That's an excellent point as well. But yeah, like it it's it's harder to deal with it if you've if you've seen freedom and then you've, but if you've never known what freedom is, then. Yeah, but I, that's an excellent additional point as well, because there is an attempt to make sure that slaves are Christian. But not to take it to the point where they become literate and are able to take their faith really seriously, it was a a a kind of a very abbreviated form of Christianity that. That masters, you know, felt, this is that they were actually doing their slaves a service by christianizing them and saving their eternal souls. Ethan, what were you gonna say?
Yeah, wasn't actually slavery at the time actually hurt the poor white population in the South because they couldn't really keep up with the laborers of huge plantations to keep up with their outputs?
Yes, actually, it was, they resented the slave owning class, there was a lot of of class resentment between poor whites and. The rich whites, and of course, the the poor whites always were hoping that someday they might be able to get into that rich upper crust and be part of that genteel society. That kind of was was in charge of the South, but yes, yes, you are very much correct in that the the labor. The the the, it it really kept wages low, because they had so many people who who worked for free, essentially. Dylan, what were you gonna say?
Did they ever have slaves give out beatings as punishment?
Um. Um. Well, there, have you seen the movie Django? Just, just out of curiosity?
No, not yet.
Okay. Not that I'm recommending it just because, I mean, I, I liked it myself, but it's, it's a very violent movie, but. It, in that movie, you have a house slave who is, is the ally of the master. And they, you know, nowadays people call, you know, someone who is a, an ally of the whites and, and works against their own people in Uncle Tom, which is a reference to a book we're going to talk about. Uh, this unit, but a little later on, or a coon or something like that. Uh, but there were slaves who were so kind of psychologically either sold out or, or broken that they would either rat out other slaves or inflict punishments themselves, but they were relatively rare. But yes, that was something that did happen. So anyway, uh, that is, you know, just kind of the, the cruelty of this institution. Um, and it included not just the, the floggings, the beatings that we talked about, but also mutilation. The, the movie Roots or the TV series Roots, which is based off of the book. Talks about Kunta Kinte and how after running away several times, they chopped his foot off to keep him from doing it. So they would brand people with hot irons. There was rape and sometimes masters would just murder their slaves. And there was no, no repercussion for it. Now, sometimes like a, a master would have a, a young man, okay? Someone who was a teenager who had a strong spirit and they didn't want to. They didn't want to lose their investment because they saw the potential for this young man to really someday, you know, do, you know, a lot of labor, et cetera. And so, um, but this young man would have a strong spirit. Yes. Does someone have something they wanted to say? Okay, uh, and so.
You cut out a whole lot during what you were just saying.
Oh, okay. Um, let me re-say that. Okay, um, must have had a bad connection there for a second. But sometimes there would be a young teenage slave who oftentimes it was a male slave. And this slave would be rebellious and have a strong spirit. And, uh, but the master, you know, normally, you know, if the, if this was an older slave, they would, you know. They might kill them. They might maim them as a way of like instilling fear. But they didn't want to lose their investment, so to speak. Uh, so, you know, again, out of a, a money-based motivation, they would send this young slave to a person who specialized in kind of the psychology of, of slavery, so to speak, known as a slave breaker. And these were often poor whites who had a small farm, uh, who made extra money on the side by breaking the spirit of young men. And actually, one of the people that we're going to talk about, Frederick Douglass, who actually you read his autobiography this summer for your summer reading. Went to a slave breaker. And actually, uh, in, does anybody remember what Frederick Douglass did? Kind of the big moment. Uh, we're going to talk about this when we get to him, but. When he was in the barn and the slave breaker was whipping him. May not be something that anybody was, is able to remember right now. Well, we'll. He actually broke the bonds that were holding him. And fought back and beat the slave breaker with like, within an inch of his life. I mean, savagely beat the slave breaker. So. We'll, um, we'll be getting to that when we get to him, but just. There are no words for, for the, the inhumanity, the, just the, the cruelty. We try to do this justice in history class and it's, it's just impossible to, to encompass and really truly, you know, show how horrible this was. It was horrible. It was, it was wrong in so many ways. And it is something that our country is still struggling with because there are a lot of people who feel like this has never really been addressed. By the way, has the, the US government ever apologized to the black population here in this country for slavery? Anyone know?
Yeah.
Yes.
Because wasn't there something that was happening for a while of like the state government paying some sort of compensation to people who were descendants of slaves? I could be wrong about that, but I remember hearing that.
Yeah, that's a separate issue called reparations. But there, like an official apology from the United States government. There, there hasn't been one from the government as a whole. But the House of Representatives did vote to officially apologize for slavery. And it wasn't that long ago. I can't remember the exact year. I want to say 2013, but I could be wrong on that. So anyway. Uh, we're still, we're still struggling with this. Now, you would think that the stuff that we just described was the, the cruelest part of slavery. Like if you, like, there were a huge number of, of former slaves that were interviewed during the Great Depression because the government was like trying to find things for people to do so they could pay them. And one of the things they did was they sent people around to interview former slaves. And, uh, so we, we got some primary sources on this. And you would think that the hardest thing would be the whippings, the beatings, the watching people get, you know, maimed and mutilated and murdered, the rape, et cetera. And actually, that wasn't the most painful part of slavery. The most painful part of slavery, anybody know? Well, what is it? If I want to guess?
Being ripped apart from their families.
Yes, um, yes. Thank you, Ethan. And Zach, was that what you were gonna say?
Yeah, that's exactly what I was gonna say. Seeing your other members of your family being sold to other people.
Right.
And because that is, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, go ahead. I didn't mean to cut you off.
Yeah. And then just realizing that you might never be able to see them ever again. And most likely won't.
Right. Because slaves, you know, they formed bonds like all human beings do with, with their children, with their significant others, with their brothers and sisters, with their parents. And those are strong emotional bonds, but to masters, to the white masters, this is business. This is economics. These people are property to them. They don't see them as human beings oftentimes. And so. The, at slave auctions, they would, and we've got lots of primary source documents, like the one you see in the upper left-hand corner. They would put people up on a pedestal of some sort and then auction them off. And children oftentimes were sold as a way of, you know, like if, if a plantation got into some financial trouble. You know, and they had some children that were getting to the age where they could be sold. That would be a way for them to bail themselves out financially. But it would be incredibly painful for the, the parents and for the children. And so there's deep psychological wounds and scars that are created when, when families are separated. And and, and people are just treated like livestock and, and, and it's just, you know, again, it's, I'm, I'm trying to do this justice and with words, but it's hard to really, you know, do it the justice it deserves. And, and really, there's a lot of money in slaves. Most of a slave owner's fortune was tied up in the value of the slaves that they owned. A prime field hand cost by eighteen fifteen, cost three hundred dollars. But by eighteen fifty eight, that same prime field hand, a, a strong male sold for one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. And a skilled slave who was like a carpenter or a blacksmith could go for fifteen hundred dollars. There was a, a very strong kind of internal slave trade economy going on. And you would think that, you know, males would be the, the, the highest priced slaves, but actually it was women who were considered good breeders who were actually worth the most. Because they could often go for as much as eighteen hundred dollars. So that is the hardest part of slavery. And by the way, uh, right after the Civil War, when the south is defeated and slaves are free. The first thing people do is they start going and trying to find their relatives who had been sold away from them. That is like the, the top priority beyond anything else. So that is slave auctions. And that of course takes us to one of the resistance movements that was created in response to slavery, which was the Underground Railroad. And basically, uh, this is a collaboration between whites who oppose slavery. And by the way, does anybody know what group of whites was most well-known for being a part? Like almost everybody in this particular group of whites was, was well-known. Oh, wow. Saw a bunch of hands there. Zach, you were first. Go ahead.
It was the Quakers.
Yes, um, the, the Quakers. Uh, so we, we may, we mentioned that early on, uh, that they were so, you know, kind of in Pennsylvania and other areas. They were very much opposed to slavery and would, would often place themselves and their families in danger to serve as a, a safe house on the Underground Railroad. But essentially, the Underground Railroad is a network of safe houses. And there were signals that were often placed to show whether it was safe for that slave house or for that safe house to be occupied by someone, like a candle in a window. Or there were quilts that were put out on, you know, like clotheslines to dry that had certain symbols on them. That were basically being kind of used as a way to signal that a place was safe or unsafe to be used. And then you had the people who took on the very dangerous job of being conductors on the, on the Underground Railroad. And so the routes went to the north and sometimes even to Canada. You know, uh, so that those who, who escaped slavery could you know, live a, a safe and free existence and not have to worry about being recaptured because southern posses were put together and would often recapture runaway slaves. So many of the slaves who ran away and were on the Underground Railroad and were traveling by night would often they would not make it. They would be recaptured by these, these southern posses. Because, you know, slave owners were going to lose a lot of money, so to speak, if they, if their, if their slaves would run away. And of course, they wanted to make an example out of people who did, again, because of fear being the primary motivation for people to do or not to do things. And so that kind of was the, um, the, the way that this, you know, kind of worked. And yeah, go ahead, Zach. What were you gonna say?
Okay, so would they, um, would they like lie about people who are free slaves, like that they were free? Would they lie about some of those that were working in the Underground Railroad and like claim them as their own slaves?
Oh, there were all kinds of things, yeah, that people did to, to escape the southern authorities, uh, to, to. We're going to talk about Harriet Tubman in just a second, but she was very clever in the lies that she came up with, like at the drop of a hat, that saved her life numerous times while she was going back into the south. When, when there was this huge price on her head and she was wanted. But yes, uh, they, they would often lie and say somebody was a free person or somebody was serving in the, in the British Navy as a, as a, as a sailor. Or, you know, there's all kinds of ways that they were able to conceal a person's true identity. But then again, southern posses were pretty savvy to a lot of this. And so sometimes it worked and sometimes it didn't. But by, yeah, and usually there was a safe house every twenty miles. So you'd travel twenty miles at night and then you would lie low during the day. And then you would travel and you travel through swampy areas. You would travel through areas where you could lose your, where dogs would lose your scent because dogs were often employed by the southern posses. By eighteen fifty, over three thousand Americans worked on the Underground Railroad and it helped over fifty thousand slaves escape to freedom. Uh, yes, Zach.
Okay, so I think. I think I might have worded it bad. I meant like did the southerners who caught the slaves running away? If there were like free slaves helping them, would they claim that those free slaves are their slaves as free labor?
Oh, yeah, like you could be a free man and have papers like Solomon Northrop did. He was, he was a free, a free black man. Um, he was, you know, he had rights. He was, he had a family. He had property. And those two guys saw, you know, the fact that he was black. They just saw that as an opportunity. They were like, well, down in the south, this guy ain't gonna have no rights. So let's just kidnap him and just sell him and make a bunch of money, you know? And so. That's kind of, yeah, like, like your rights could at any time be, uh, you know, overturned in, in certain parts of the country. It all depends on who the authorities are there. The feds often stayed out of this. And it was on a state by state basis. So. Yeah, it, it's just. It's a, it's, 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 I don't know. I, I don't know how to totally encompass all of this in words, but that takes us to one of the great figures in American history. Like, her life is crazier than most Hollywood movie scripts. Like just, just this lady was so brave, so powerful. And I know that.
This is my slide.
Yeah, I know some people have this one. So Elizabeth and then Chloe is not here. So. Elizabeth, I will let you, uh, go ahead and then I'll just jump in every so often. I do have the trailer from the movie Harriet, which we will play at the end. If you have anything additional that you wanted to add in with like in terms of video, that's great too, but go ahead.
Yeah, so Harriet Tubman, definitely one of the biggest names from the Underground Railroad. She was born a slave and she, she suffered a head injury as a child. She was sent to the store and came across an enslaved man who had left his plantation without permission. And that man's owner asked her to help restrain him and Harriet refused and got a two-pound weight thrown at her head. So for the rest of her life, she suffered headaches, seizures and narcoleptic episodes that she considered religious experiences.
Yeah, like, wasn't it like a horseshoe or something like that? Didn't she like, wasn't like a, I, I, I can't remember exactly, but I thought it was like.
Some said a horseshoe, some just said it was some kind of heavy object that was nearby, but yeah.
Okay.
Um, she married John Tubman and changed her name to Harriet in honor of her mother, who I believe had passed at the time. In eighteen forty-eight, she escaped from her plantation in Maryland. She traveled ninety miles to, to Philadelphia. Originally, she went with two of her brothers. But they discovered that a three hundred dollar reward had been issued for Harriet. And so her brothers turned back and she continued on her own. She, she was in Philadelphia for a while and she received news that I, I think it was her niece, one of her relatives was about to be sold and separated from her family. So she returned to, to Maryland to get some of her family back. And that was the first of nineteen trips that she made as a conductor on the Underground Railroad. She rescued her her parents, her four brothers and over three hundred other slaves from eighteen fifty to eighteen sixty.
Yeah, just like, and, and every time she went back, like she became famous, like they were looking for her in the south, right? Wasn't there a reward on her head?
Uh, forty thousand dollars for her capture.
And at that time, that's an incredible amount of money. Like that's a fortune. You would be set for life if you got that, that money. That's how badly they wanted to capture her. Do you have any stories from like when she was in the south on her various trips and like, you know, she was about to get discovered by a suspicious white person and then like she would just think of something like, you know, like. And then like she would just think of something like, you know, like she just she was incredibly creative and smart and she just thought of like this way to like, you know, get out of it. And and it it worked, like it was just amazing. Do you have any of those uh stories out of like
I didn't find, I didn't find any specific stories like that, but she was renowned for just the way she could come up with things to get her out of situations like that, just at the drop of a hat. She was a fabulous conductor for the Underground Railroad.
Yeah, I I one that I remember that kind of sticks out, um there was a posse um coming down a dirt road. Um and uh she was basically like by herself and they knew they had her description. And so uh they like and they had dogs and and so she knew that like she would be, you know, uh wait a minute, no, this this in this instance, they didn't have dogs, I'm sorry. But they she knew that they would like, you know, if they saw her, like she would be surrounded, there would she would not be able to get away. And um she was trying to think fast. She was looking around and she noticed that there was um uh like a hen house uh where there were a bunch of chickens nearby. This was like on a plantation and uh and, you know, it was in the area where they kept chickens. And so uh she went over and she let the chickens out and she put like a kind of a shawl over her head like an old woman would wear. And um she basically was just chasing chickens around. And when they rounded the corner, they were like, oh, you know, just an old, there's just an old woman slave like trying to chase down chickens and they just passed her by. They they didn't even like stop and and look at her. I mean, and it was just that that incredible like um uh quick thinking that uh made her into a legend. Now, uh I know we're gonna get into some history that goes kind of beyond uh what we're talking about right here, but do you have anything on what happened to her later in her life after the under like during the Civil War, after uh slavery, et cetera?
Uh yeah, during the Civil War, she she served as a spy for the Union.
Yeah, incredible. Like, yeah, just i- she's so brave. I mean, it is just amazing. But go ahead.
Um yeah, she served as a spy for the Union and then ah and was, you know, as was dedicated to abolition. And afterwards, I can't quite, I didn't have that written down, but I do remember coming across the Civil War stuff. She, I can't remember what it was.
Yeah, she went into the South as a wanted person during a war, which where she would have been shot and killed as a as a spy and as a traitor. But also because Southerners hated her so much, time and time again to spy for Union forces because she wanted so badly for slavery as an institution to be ended. Uh but then after the war, uh she becomes kind of this uh this activist for for rights for for African-Americans and just um, she's a legend. What was her nickname, by the way?
Uh Moses.
Grandma Moses, yeah, is what they called her. Um and sometimes even the people who were being freed by her were a little bit afraid of her, like, like she had a gun with her at all times. And uh like sometimes when slaves who were being freed wanted to turn back, she would point the gun at them. And she said, we're gonna get to freedom or we're gonna die trying. And uh if you don't keep moving, I'll kill you myself. Uh Lauren, what were you gonna say?
I was just curious what her name meant.
Um Harriet Tubman or Oh, Grandma Moses. Well, you know, Moses freed the um the the Israelites from slavery in Egypt, you know. Uh the the story in the in the Old Testament, the the parting of the Red Sea, all of that. Um that was, you know, that's a reference to that, you know, this is a people, this is someone who is leading her people to freedom. But uh yeah, I'm not sure what her original, her 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 birth name, Amorinta Ross. You know, I know Ross is just a last name, but Amorinta means. Uh Faith, go ahead. What were you gonna say?
I was just gonna ask, um would it, how would she have been a, did people know what she looked like? Because if she was a spy during the Civil War, if people recognized her anyway, like when
Well
is still out for her, right?
Her her facial features, um yeah, I mean, it it for a lot of white people, they didn't, you know, um they didn't uh look at at black people kind of, you know, in terms of how they like is individuals where they can recognize them. And by the way, you can't, there's no um there's no way to get a wanted poster out there that is going to be like, you know, pictorially accurate enough that you could that you could really reckon. I mean, so there were some people who knew exactly what she looked like. Uh but a lot of people uh just were often fooled. She just looked like, and she would often kind of like, you know, look down, look away, um so you couldn't see her face directly. Uh but she was very good at like just, you know, not getting caught. I I I don't know else to say that. Um Scott, what were you gonna say?
You say she had a gun at her at all times. Is there a documented number of how many people she shot?
Uh off the top of my head, I don't know. Um but she only used it as a last resort, like as a very, very last resort. Because you know when someone gets murdered um that that's gonna raise the alarms. Like, you're gonna have, i- it's it's like kicking the hornet's nest. You're gonna have everybody on you. So it's much better to get away without having to do it if you can, because then you don't stir up as much opposition. Elizabeth, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Um I did have a quote from her that I really liked. I had reasoned this out in my mind. There was one of two things I had a right to, liberty or death. If I could not have one, I would have the other for no man should take me alive.
Yeah, what, just an incredible spirit. And there's um a a big movement right now to replace Andrew Jackson on the twenty-dollar bill with Harriet Tubman. And I mean, for good reason, like just an unbelievable American hero. And I was, I've always said to my students, like, I can't believe that somebody hasn't made a movie out of her life yet. Because you can't make up a Hollywood script as good as this. Yeah.
Okay, so I just looked it up and um it said that Harriet Tubman never killed anyone because of the unwanted attention. That was the the sole reason that she didn't kill anyone.
Yes, because once you shoot somebody, then boy, oh, then you've really got problems. Um yeah, and um uh there is a movie that was just made last year in twenty nineteen. It came out last November. Uh so this'll like just be a year that it's been out. It's called Harriet. And um let me find this real fast here. It's somewhere, it's one of these tabs. All right, so um again, highly recommended. So here it is.
You are welcome here anytime. If I'm free, my family should be too. I made up my mind. I'm going back. Confident, composed, when trouble comes, you'll be ready.
Says here, five and a half feet tall. You ain't more than five feet.
Must've worn my high post that day.
Why you back here? It ain't safe.
I come to get you, bring all of you to freedom.
Do you know what would happen if you got caught? You got lucky, Harry.
I made it this far, my own. So don't you tell me what I came to do.
Welcome to the Underground Railroad. Everybody everywhere is looking for you.
God, don't give me people to own people. Find this thief and burn her at the stake. I will give every last drop of blood in my veins. Until this monster calls slavery is dead.
All right, so that is just a small picture. Yeah, go ahead, Olivia. What were you gonna say?
Didn't she lead like a armed raid?
Yeah, uh during the Civil War, um she led a a group of black soldiers, I believe, uh if I remember correctly. Just an incredible, brave, awesome uh human being. Uh and so um that's Harriet Tubman. And uh definitely what I I would consider to be one of the great heroes of American history fighting against um one of the the most evil institutions uh ever, you know, that was a part of our our country's history. Um so uh we need to talk about the um reaction against slavery in the North. And this is, of course, where we're gonna talk about Frederick Douglass um as well. But um people who were against slavery uh for uh either religious reasons or because they were formerly in, you know, they were formerly slaves themselves and were now speaking out against the institution um were known as abolitionists. Uh and of course, the Quakers uh definitely were very, very much abolitionist. But um the uh uh they wanted to uh use their power politically to push for the abolition of slavery usually at the slit at the state level. Because of course, um you know, trying to get something done at the federal level would um, you know,
You're cutting out a
Oh, sorry. Uh trying to get something done at the federal level would produce quite a reaction. So um they did succeed state by state in the North. Am I still cutting out? Uh can you hear me now? Is it better?
It's still Still like cutting out a little bit.
All right, yeah, my internet connection is slow. Maybe the maybe the internet is really crowded right now. Can can everybody kind of hear me now? Is I'm just waiting to see until it's uh kind of back. All right, um so anyway, um uh they they basically were able to put pressure on state lawmakers um in all of your northern states. And um in every state in the North, uh they were able to get slavery banned by eighteen oh four. So even the whole household slave thing, you know, just banned in all northern states. Uh now, there were some people who were called, quote, permanent apprentices. So so they kind of, you know, were able to skirt around these anti-slavery laws in northern states. Uh so there were some exceptions here and there. Um but the South really got anxious. Uh the the more the abolitionists agitated, the more the South got anxious about the the intentions of of these northerners towards, you know, what they considered to be their economic lifeline, which was slavery. Uh so they banned, you know, Southerners banned their literature. They ejected them from the South. The, you know, they called them all kinds of names, et cetera. Um now, two of the most famous abolitionists are William Lloyd Garrison, um who uh was the founder of the American Anti-Slavery Society and of a uh abolitionist newspaper called The Liberator. And Frederick Douglass, who we've talked about before, but let's just quickly go over Frederick Douglass's story. Um he was a slave, I believe, in Maryland on a plantation. And what as a young man was sent to a slave breaker. But like I mentioned a little bit ago, um he was uh this this person was trying to work and beat and work and beat and work and beat him to the point where he just would be like, I can't take it anymore. I'll do whatever you want. And one night, while he was in the barn getting beaten, uh his um the the leather straps holding his hands up were were they broke and he grabbed the whip from the slave breaker and beat him almost to death. Um and uh so he had this kind of strong and dominantable spirit himself. Uh and then later, he uh there were some abolitionists who uh were able to sneak him a Navy uniform. And so he was able to uh like a sailor's uniform. And so he was able to uh disguise himself as a sailor and make it to the North. And that is how he got uh his freedom. But one of the great uh talents that he had was as a public speaker. And so he was um kind of uh seen as one of the greatest um uh persuaders, I guess you could say, of of uh the abolitionist movement. Uh you know, when they're trying to persuade other people in the North to be against slavery because he could he could tell such powerful stories and he had such a gift for public speaking. And so uh Frederick Douglass, of course, also was a gifted writer. Uh and so um he really uh makes a huge impact on the fight to end this institution, which is the goal of the abolitionist movement. So when we talk about abolitionists, we're always talking about northerners or escaped slaves, et cetera. But we rarely talk about southerners, southern whites. So the one exception uh to kind of the um uh the whole uh, you know, whites, whites, southerners are always, you know, pro-slavery. Uh that is is that really stands out is two ladies, um Sarah and Angelina Grimkey, known as the Grimkey Sisters. Um and so uh Paris, this is her slide, but she's not here, so I'll talk to her about getting a different one. But um uh basically, they're born into a wealthy uh family, which owns a plantation near Charleston. And as they grow older, they both become convinced that slavery is a great evil. Just morally, just from their reading, from educating themselves, from from their study of the Bible, et cetera. And they tried very hard to convert the rest of their family to their point of view, but were unable to do so. So um they decided to leave. Uh and um, you know, they were considered traitors to the to the white southern, you know, in uh institutions, et cetera. And they went to the North and um became abolitionists in the North. And um it just so happens that they happen to be very gifted writers. And when one of their letters was published by William Lloyd Garrison, Angelina uh actually becomes a um recognized leader of the abolitionist movement. Uh but she doesn't just speak about slavery. She also speaks about another issue, which uh again, there's not a huge number of people um pushing for this right now. She says that women needed to be treated with equality. Um and that uh the inferior position that women found themselves in in the world where men kind of controlled things uh was unfair as well. And so um the Grimkey Sisters um become kind of these powerful advocates for both abolitionism and for women's equality uh in both their writings and in their public speaking. So um kind of an exception to the rule that that white southerners um uh were, you know, pro-slavery. All right, now, uh one of the things that white southerners like to criticize in the North was the factory system. Because they said, well, your factory workers are quote-unquote wage slaves and they're treated worse than our slaves are, which of course is not true. But um we need to, we need to talk about the factory system that had grown up around the factories that Samuel Slater had brought across the Atlantic. Um and so um a Massachusetts businessman named Francis Cabot Lowell had built a textile mill in Lowell, Massachusetts, outside of Boston. And he mostly employed young, single women um who would stay in boarding houses and would work their factory shifts. And these became known as the Lowell Mill Girls. And there's no government regulation on what factory owners can do. They can basically just do whatever they feel like they can get away with. So um they oftentimes, they were working long shifts for low pay. Uh so some of the Lowell Mill Girls organized, um so this is kind of the beginnings of of what would later become the Labor Movement. of what would later become the labor movement. And they kind of created these informal little unions to lobby for a 10-hour workday and were able to put some political pressure on legislators in Massachusetts, who eventually did make a law that said that factory workers couldn't be pushed to work beyond a certain amount of time. Now, one of the great evils of the factory system in the North is what? What does anybody know? What is the thing that is the most egregious about the factory system? The worst...
Child labor.
Yeah, child labor. And Faith, what were you gonna say?
I was gonna say child labor.
Yeah, child labor. So child labor really becomes part of that to, you know... And there is, there is an important court case in the 1840s, Commonwealth v. Hunt, where, you know, the factory owners were trying to use their influence to get labor unions outlawed. But the courts, you know, ruled against them and they were allowed to continue to exist. But we'll be talking more about the evils of child labor and how long it will be before that is eventually eradicated as well, as we get further in. And really, that'll be more third quarter than this quarter. But as we kind of get into the late 1820s, early 1830s, there is a real difference emerging between the North and the South. And this is kind of an overview slide, but it's a very important overview. So this is what we call sectionalism. Like, the North and the South, in a nutshell, this is what it means. The North and the South are becoming like two separate countries. The North, okay, alright, I'll just ask you guys, like, what are the big differences between the North and the South as we get further and further into the 1800s? Jacob, go ahead.
So the North is becoming more and more industrialized and more and more anti-slavery.
Okay, so, and give me a contrast with the South. What, the North is more industrial, the South is more what?
Is more agricultural based. Like, they produce the raw materials. The North turns those raw materials into products.
Very good. Okay, that's one of the big ones. And then, of course, obviously, we have the anti-slavery issue as well. Ethan, what were you gonna add?
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing.
Okay. Did you have any additional things that you saw?
Well, if anyone's going to say shipping, I would think that they would both be kind of equal on shipping, but the North definitely does have more broad terms of shipping, like general products, like import and export.
Okay, yeah, and that's actually an excellent little side point as well. You know, the whole, you know, extent of the shipping industry. Max, what were you gonna say?
Everybody, or not everybody, but most people in the South are these like big aristocrats, where most people in the North are these common factory workers, just having to go about their day.
Okay, so when we're looking at points of comparison and contrast, because again, you could see an essay question on this, right? Where they say, "Compare, contrast, you know, the North and the South from a certain year to a certain year", and you're like, "Oh, I know what this is. This is sectionalism." Yeah, this is like, there are some definite points of comparison and contrast. Really, what we said before about agricultural versus industrial is one big one. Another one is where people live. In the South, people live kind of in small towns and rural areas. In the North, the people are starting more and more to live in cities. So cities really become these big population centers. So that's a trend we call urbanization, which we'll be talking about actually third quarter. And yes, Max's point about the aristocracy in the South is very important. But there is, yeah, and the aristocracy in the South is a land-based aristocracy. So they, their wealth is based off of their ownership of land and the agriculture that is done on that land. But there are rich people in the North, the factory owners. It's just that their wealth isn't land-based. It's, their wealth is based off of, you know, their ability to produce large numbers of products. Another very important difference is the racial makeup of the two sides of the country. What is the majority race in the South? Anyone?
Be slaves, wouldn't it?
Yeah, it's black. The South is actually majority black. It's a small white population versus a very large black population, especially as you get further in, just because of the profitability, so to speak, of, you know, producing slave children and selling them, etc. And again, you know, that is a horrible, horrible institution and way of looking at things. But the white population in the North is, it grows by leaps and bounds, not only due to just huge numbers of families and just small farms and cities, etc., but also due to immigration as well. And there's kind of an ideological divide between the two. I think somebody hit on it already, where they said that abolition really becomes very strong in the North. The North becomes very, very religious. In the South, you know, they, they're somewhat religious, but not nearly, it's not nearly as intense. Because again, you have to kind of, you know, have a giant blind spot for the institution of slavery. Like, if you're really gonna take your faith seriously in the South as a white person, you couldn't just, you know, be this super sincere Christian, because you own people. Like, I mean, if you did, anyway. Yeah, Ethan, what were you gonna say?
Yeah, wasn't like also like the chance of how you're standing, like basically your way of life is that your way of life in the South is mainly determined by your race, while your way of life in the North is mainly dependent on how much money you have?
Right, well, and also just remember that there are poor whites in the South.
Yeah, but I'm saying majority-wise.
Well, I mean, and yeah, actually, the poor whites outnumber the rich whites in the South. That being in that upper crust is very, you know, like, they're very jealous. They want to be in that upper crust, but it's a small number of people. But yes, there is definitely a racial connection to both freedom and economic wherewithal. Nick, what were you gonna say?
Would there also be a bit more like a middle class kind of starting to form due to like the Industrial Revolution kind of disforming up in the North? Where the South would be more just, of course, richer than poor?
We haven't gotten to the point in history where we really talk about it much, because it's very small at this point. But yes, there is a middle class, and that middle class is often people who have a skill. That skill gives them the ability to make more money than your average factory worker or your average agricultural hand. And so therefore, they have kind of a higher standard of living, but they're not quite as well-to-do as, you know, say for instance, your factory owners in your rich upper crust. And so, you know, oftentimes, there's professionals, you know, your lawyers, your doctors, etc. I mean, and those existed in the South too, it's just that there were fewer of them. But then also, you know, your tradesmen, who could command a higher salary due to their skill in carpentry or being a blacksmith, etc. Yes, Ethan?
I just had a question asked. I think it was like around this time, there was sort of a huge chemistry movement in Britain at the time. When in history would that sort of leak over to the US and like specifically the North?
Okay, so you're talking like Joseph Black, Joseph Priestley, Schele, all of those guys. Well, honestly, and then the guy from France who was killed in the Great Terror, Leboz, his name is escaping me right now. But that scientific knowledge, like chemistry is one of those subjects where it's like, it doesn't just all happen at once. It's like, you know, people are discovering elements here, elements there, and eventually Mendeleev will put together the periodic table. You know, and that's, that's like around this time, actually, in history. I have to remember, I'd have to go back and look exactly what year it was that Mendeleev did that. But it's in my AP Euro slides somewhere. But it, that knowledge is considered kind of culturally sophisticated and advanced. And, you know, look, I guess the way to say it is, we're kind of hillbillies compared to the Europeans. That's how Europeans see it. It's even how a lot of Americans see it, because we're so close to the wild. We're so close to the frontier, into the land, into, you know, we're into these very practical, you know, kind of things. So they're, they're the more civilized. They have the cities, the more advanced, you know, kind of... They have the universities that have been around for hundreds of years, etc. Go ahead, what were you gonna say?
Yeah, I just wondered, is like, did that come around at like the same time that the Industrial Revolution kind of leaked over, or were they kind of different?
There, like, there are some people in America, like, we're gonna talk about this when we talk about the John Quincy Adams administration, who are very much into the advances in science that have been made over in Europe. But there are fewer, they're fewer and farther between in America than they are in Europe. And so, and so the Smithsonian will be dedicated during the Quincy Adams administration. And there's a growing interest in science, it's just that many people are in, are basically kind of engaged in practical pursuits. Now, you'll really see us engage in kind of our own scientific experimentation, especially when it has practical applications, when you get into the later 1800s. So you're gonna have your Teslas, your Edison's, you know, your people who are just absolutely brilliant and who are making advances and practically applying scientific principles, etc. But that is very much more European in the early 1800s and becomes more American as we get into the late 1800s, like in the 1880s, 1890s. But excellent question. So that is sectionalism. And of course, what are we foreshadowing here? If the two parts of the country, the North and the South, are becoming more and more dissimilar, they're becoming more and more like two separate countries, what's eventually going to happen? Yes, Kenzie?
There's eventually going to be like a fight between their differences to settle it.
Right, I mean, we're foreshadowing the Civil War here. So, you know, the two parts of the country are growing further and further apart. And you know, and as when we look at back at picture, you know, like the big picture of history, it's kind of easy to see, you know, that those trends are kind of there. So that is sectionalism, very important, something you have to know, something they love to ask about. Alright, and that takes us to an interesting solution to this growing problem with like, how should we, how should we solve this, this great national sin? You know, people in the North are trying to figure out, what do we do for people who are, you know, given their freedom? Like, where do they go? And the first person who actually kind of suggested the possibility of repatriating people back to Africa was Captain Paul Cuffey, who was a ship captain, who was half Native American, half African. And he financed and led two resettlement voyages, where it was like, okay, people were kidnapped away from Africa, so let's take them back home. And actually, the British, who had, who would ban slavery, or the international slave trade themselves, and, you know, that's the whole William Wilberforce story, etc., they created a colony on what was known as the Pepper Coast on Sub-Saharan Africa. Their colony was called Sierra Leone, and it was basically a place for freed slaves to be dropped off. And they would, you know, when they found a slave ship and they would, you know, they didn't know where to send people back to, they would just drop them all off in Sierra Leone, where they could kind of, you know, figure it out and start over. So some Americans began to kind of, you know, so Paul Cuffey would drop people off in Sierra Leone. But some American politicians began to really think, "This is the answer. This is the solution. This is what we need to do, is we need to create a way to get people back to Africa, because that's how, that's how you make up for taking them from Africa." But again, remember that a lot of people by this point are born here in North America. And so Henry Clay and President Monroe, James Monroe, founded the American Colonization Society. And with the help of some Quakers, in 1821, they created a new colony on the coast of Africa called Liberia, which is still a country today. And so this is an African colony created by America to repatriate people who had been kidnapped from Africa and were being sent back home, or any other person of African descent who did not want to be in the United States anymore. And so, does anybody know what they called the capital of Liberia? I mean, this is like really esoteric, you'd have to know your geography pretty well. Still the name of it today. It's called Monrovia, which is actually named for James Monroe, our president at the time. And so this colony at first was led by a guy named Jehudi Ashmun. And then later, when it became an independent country, it was led by the president of Liberia, Joseph Jenkins Roberts, in 1847. So notice how at first, they didn't trust the Africans to run their own affairs. So a white person, Mr. Ashmun, had to lead the colony. So any thoughts on that? Like, is this a good solution, bad solution? Is this, is this patronizing, etc.? Brayden, go ahead.
Yeah, I think the fact that a lot of slaves at this point were being born in America, like, I feel like this is a bad idea because of that, because like, a lot of them probably see America as their home. And like, I don't, I don't know how well, like, the history of their people was passed on. But I would assume that a lot of those younger generations wouldn't really feel connected to Africa and would rather stay in America.
Okay, Faith, what were you gonna say?
Kind of the same thing, but I was gonna say, I think they had good intentions, but they, I don't think that they realized that they weren't going back to a home. You know, like, they were just being relocated somewhere else. And I, like I said, I think they did have some sort of good intention, but I think they didn't think that far ahead.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I think you make an excellent point there. Ethan, go ahead.
Yeah, this was also kind of a bad idea. It's like, most of the times, like, only some people's parents came from Africa and most people's grandparents, slaves' grandparents, came from Africa. So they feel kind of detached from it. They're more attached to the home country, but I think this was made in the assumption that white people and black people couldn't really live together in harmony.
Yeah, it's like, it's almost like kind of racist, like, almost like, yeah, oh, we don't want you here with us. We would like you to be somewhere else, you know, so there's that kind of connotation to it as well. Scott, what were you gonna say? Scott?
We're the, yeah, I think we're not mute. Would the slaves have a choice to be shipped back, or would they just get sent on the boat?
As far as I know, this was not involuntary. It wasn't like they just, now, if a, if a ship was found on the high seas, because there were Portuguese and other ships that were still kidnapping people from Africa or still trading with the nations on the African coast that would, you know, collect slaves. So they're, but they were kind of rogue, you know, so to speak. So if one of them were found, they were, that those people would be involuntarily dropped off in Liberia sometimes, or in Sierra Leone. But as far as I know, it was a choice, where they advertised it, got people who wanted to go back, signed up, and then would take an expedition across the ocean with them. Did that answer your question?
I think that's, yeah, I think that's kind of better than, if they wanted to go back, then they could. But I thought they were just getting forced to, which that would be pretty wrong.
Now, that would be a little on the rude side, a little, not just a little. Olivia, what were you gonna say?
I think you kind of already answered what I was gonna say, but it is good that they gave them the option to go there, but it's also kind of off to me that they made an area just specifically where they could go if they wanted to. And I just thought that was just a little weird, that's all I was gonna say.
Yeah, I mean, when people talk about this nowadays, you know, I mean, a lot of them see it as very, very patronizing. But Faith, what were you gonna say?
I was gonna add on, I think that maybe even... Uh, I was gonna add on. I think that um maybe even if some people weren't born in Africa, they might just want to leave America. Because especially, I'm sure a lot of people could tell that there might have been a war coming. But um I I feel like if you were born and raised in a country that's done nothing but beat and degrade and just completely, just was completely awful to you, I don't think anybody would want to stay unless like they got to live in the North or something like that, you know?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it it too, I think you make an excellent point. America was a pretty horrible place to live for a lot of people. Uh, Velaci, what were you gonna say?
Uh, I think at the time, it was a good idea because uh they, I guess they felt like it was better for them to be away from this dangerous place. But um now thinking about it, it's probably not the best. It's more pre- patronizing.
Yeah, and also like, hey, we don't want you here, kind of connotation, then almost, yeah. So I mean, now when scholars debate this, you know, kind of, people see it in a relatively negative light. And Ethan, what were you gonna say?
Weren't there also like language, language barriers with this type of thing? Is that didn't like most slaves in the United States, like, I know they couldn't read or write, but I think they knew at least how to speak English, and so they would be most familiar with English.
Oh, right. And there there were hundreds of different like languages in Africa. And so if you just drop somebody off in the midst of a, uh, you know, and there's people from various, you know, different tribes that had been captured, they're not necessarily going to be able to speak to each other. So um, yeah, uh, that's, there's additional confusion and chaos. And of course, English was used as the way, it's kind of Franca. What were you gonna say? Sorry. Go ahead, Ethan.
I think you're cutting out again.
Okay. Um, can everybody hear me now? Yes, no? Ethan, am I, am I, uh, is my connection stable now?
Okay.
Yes, no? Hello?
Yeah, I'm, you're like, cutting out a lot and
Still?
I can't really hear you because you're cutting out a lot.
Okay, can everybody hear me now?
Try again.
Can everybody hear me now?
Yeah, it it's like still so.
Still?
I think there.
There, that's better. Okay, yeah.
Okay.
My my son's probably streaming some some video game thing or something. It's probably like using up all our bandwidth. But go ahead. What were you gonna say, Ethan?
Uh, on that side note, were there actually any case of like uh free African Americans who like went to England or something?
Hmm, for what purpose? Just for to live there, to to conduct business there?
Well, I mean, one, well, I mean, one to possibly commit, uh, you know, conduct business and or, you know, just escape America once they got freed because to get out of that sort of culture. Plus, you know, since they are a new English.
Yeah, I mean.
Wouldn't be as much of a problem as a language barrier.
Britain did have a number of free uh Africans living there, so um and they they had kind of their own abolitionist movement, and there were speakers who were African. Just remember that Britain is much smaller than uh the United States, so um the the population.
There probably be.
There, but there are, there are some cases, yes. I I I I do remember some some specific cases. I just can't remember exactly names right off the top of my head right now. But yeah, so that is the American Colonization Society and the founding of Liberia. Which, you know, one of those little trivia facts that James about James Monroe, a lot of people don't know is that Liberia's capital is named in his honor. Now, while all of this is happening, there is another crusade that starts, which we're gonna see um kind of the full um kind of logical extension of in about a hundred years. So in the eighteen twenties, we have some preachers who are are concerned with the breakdown of the American family, which they considered to be kind of the the central thing that that makes people stable and happy, et cetera, and 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 the the central institution that must be protected. And and they saw alcohol as the um as kind of the greatest enemy of the family. So can anybody tell me why would alcohol, why would this this thing that had been around for thousands of years, why would that suddenly be like the greatest enemy of the family? Lauren, go ahead. What were you gonna say?
I'm saying probably because it alters who they are and what their behavior is, I guess.
Oh, yeah.
Obviously, with the influence.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Like, you know, someone can be one person when they're sober and a completely different person when they're drunk. Ethan, what were you gonna say?
I think specifically because why alcohol hasn't been much of a problem before, why it is now? Because distilling spirits is a lot more common in America, like, that's how they made like the, there was a whole revolt about taxing whiskey. Like, so distilled spirits are very important and distilled spirits specifically have a lot more alcohol content than what you might find in Europe or something like that. So alcohol consumption is a lot higher
Okay, and that.
In America at the time.
That whiskey's a strong, strong drink. Yeah, okay. Um, Kenzie, what were you gonna add?
Uh, going on with like, with what Ethan said, industrialization was like really booming. So the fact that they were able to make more products and like get more alcohol out there, people who um get angry whenever they use alcohol, that could have been happening more and more often.
Okay, yeah, I mean, just it's just more widely available. You don't have to make your own. You can buy it. It's being it's being produced by factories. I think that's an excellent additional point. And so you have these preachers who who see alcohol as kind of the root of a lot of the the problems uh and evils in society. And so um they they were asking people to voluntarily um kind of um, you know, get off the habit, so to speak, kind of like what Alcoholics Anonymous does now. And uh at first, they were asking uh drinkers to limit the amount of alcohol they drank. And then, and that's what's called being a teetotaler, um which we'll talk about a little bit further on. And then eventually, they wanted people to completely abstain from it altogether and and take a vow of of abstinence from alcohol. And it's amazing how much this grassroots organization um just, you know, grows and explodes. So temperance um is is really, you know, i- it's it's all about alcohol. Yeah, go ahead, Nick. What were you gonna say?
Sorry, but uh do they, uh, shoot, um, do they use kind of like fire and brimstone type tactics as well to try to get them off of alcohol, I guess, to try to instill fear or just doubt in their minds?
It was more, it was more about the um, the like, the the terrible effects it had on families. And, you know, oftentimes, the people who who joined these chapters, these temperance chapters, were people who had had bad experiences because of alcohol. So yes, they did try to scare young people, and you are you are correct in in kind of assuming that there is some of that there. They tried to like keep young people who were um, who had never really become alcoholics away from it. But that isn't as much of a part of this movement right now as the people who had had bad experiences, who had lost their families, you know, had had lost their jobs, had become drunks, et cetera, and who were who were basically trying to turn their lives around. And then, of course, um, there were a lot of ladies who were involved because they wanted their husbands to stay off of it or stay away from it. Brayden, what were you gonna say?
Um, so I don't know a lot about this. So my my question is like, does this have like a significant effect on like the the prohibition that comes on later?
This is the, this is the very beginnings of it. So this is the roots of that movement, which it just goes to show how strong grassroots movements can be. Because um when they start this, within five years, there's two thousand two hundred chapters and a hundred and seventy thousand members across the country. And then after a decade, there's eight thousand chapters and one point five million members. And it really, to get a constitutional amendment pushed through is a very difficult thing, especially with something like banning a drink, which is very popular with a good portion of the population. So it just goes to show you how powerful um grassroots organizing can be, especially if uh a powerful religious organization like the church is involved in it. So we're gonna actually talk about that more uh when we get closer to um prohibition itself. But yes, this is all leading up to prohibition. So excellent. Uh, and Ethan, what were you gonna say?
Yeah, I was, but but I think also some part due to the prohibition later was due, you know, like fear of German products and, you know, German beer and all that.
Well, there's there's a temporary, there's a temporary prohibition during World War One, more for rationing purposes, actually, because the grain that was used to make whiskey was needed for the troops, like they they were rationing everything, yeah. But um, but go ahead. What were you gonna say?
I think the main like tactic that most pre- preachers use is probably, you know, the think about the children tactic and sort of that.
Right. It's not, it's not as fear as much as like, you know, guilt, like.
Wasn't this also not much of a problem before? Because I think you stated earlier about, you know, how like the whole family unit kind of changed during like the late seventeen hundreds, where, you know, it's like the husband went off to work and the woman
I stayed home.
Wife stayed home. And while basically that caused more and more pressure to be put on the guy and then, you know, when a guy's stressed and then drink drinks alcohol.
Right. That's often a way people deal with their 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 stress, they're being overwhelmed. You know, wage wage slavery uh, you know, was like considered kind of this hyperbolic criticism, you know, that southerners labeled leveled at at northerners because slavery was so much worse. But there is something to the fact that that the factory life isn't that great. And it is 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 like the the hours were long and the pay was low and it was very difficult. So yes, uh, and and people turned to it. Um, go ahead.
I think it also may have been, you know, like, in more city life, you get a smaller and smaller homes. If you start to feel more claustrophobic and um just the general environment's more dilapidated and gray.
Yeah, yeah, right. And and just you're not close to nature anymore. You're living in kind of this.
It's like the air itself is starting to get hard to breathe and the water itself is like you'd rather drink alcohol than the water.
Well, yeah, I mean, and you're and you're looking again at more the late eighteen hundreds, when when cities get really big and industrialization is really taking hold, like, I know, in a much stronger way. But yeah, um, there is a lot of that as well. So um, but uh, you know, this is gonna be an interesting journey because we'll cut, we'll come back and we'll we'll touch on this a number of times before we finally get to prohibition in terms of like how they're able to get politicians on board, how this how this plays with with people and what role the church plays and what role women are gonna eventually gonna play in this movement as well. So um, yeah, uh, so this is your first introduction to to temperance, which will eventually lead to prohibition. All right, um, we have another state coming into the Union at this time. And uh, again, this is, you know, pretty logical because Mississippi has already come into the Union, so it's surrounded, this Alabama Territory is surrounded on all sides except for the South by states. And so because the Creek Nation was was the power of the Creek Nation was destroyed, and and the Chickasaw, Choctaw and and uh Cherokee that lived in this area were also reduced, excuse me. There's just an incredible amount of of really rich, you know, awesome topsoil, you know, that that really black loamy soil that is just perfect for growing things like cotton. And so there is an out, there is actually like a a rush to get land in what, you know, was called Alabama Territory at the time, but of course was going to become called Alabama. And uh, there's there's, they call this land rush Alabama fever. And um, there's kind of a new aristocracy, you know, like, it's like people who are like, man, I wish I could be one of those rich upper crust people. Their life looks so awesome. Some of, some people were able to get land when it was cheap and then establish themselves and become part of this new rich upper crust in what became known as Alabama. And so that land rush is what helps Alabama uh reach the threshold uh for statehood, which was still sixty thousand people. And so they create a state constitution and they are admitted to the Union as the twenty-second state and as a slave state, bringing the total number of states uh who are free and states that are slave as eleven to eleven. So again, southerners are very, very protective of kind of that ability in the Senate to block legislation that might hurt the institution of slavery. But another state was um going to basically try to enter the Union, which would upset the balance. And that was Missouri. Now, Missouri, if you look at the map there, um, is, why do you think Missouri, anybody who knows their geography well enough to know like major cities, major rivers, why do you think Missouri was was gaining population faster than, you know, places, you know, to the south of it? Zach, go ahead.
So it's um, it's sitting on the Mississippi and Missouri River, which are both very, very important rivers.
Yes.
Like waterways, especially for trade.
Right.
And then there are also, um, it's not the best soil, but it's workable land.
Yes, yes. Um, and Ethan, what were you gonna add?
Well, the sore position is it's kind of like in the center of it all, like it has the territory to the west. It has like um, sort of like the port cities in like Illinois and.
Oh, but what very important, what very important important port city is sitting right at where the Mississippi and the Missouri Rivers meet each other, very important trading city. As a matter of fact, they would later get a big arch in their city because they were considered.
St. Louis?
Yes, St. Louis is the gateway to the west, so to speak. So uh because of St. Louis, really, I mean, New Orleans is what makes it so Louisiana can come in and St. Louis is what's making it so Missouri can come in. Now, notice how Missouri kind of reaches a pretty good ways up into the north there, kind of like all the way up the border with Illinois quite a ways there. But the people who had been moving into Missouri, many of them were uh practicing slavery and had plantations. And so um, but there were other people who didn't practice slavery, so so Missouri's kind of an interesting mix. So when Missouri applies to come into the Union, this is going to make it where the slave states outnumber the free states in the north. And so in the House of Representatives, um, a representative, Representative Talmadge, is going to add an amendment to the, when Missouri tries to come in. So we're gonna talk about this when we talk about the state actually coming in, that would have gradually ended slavery in um Missouri. Okay, so it's known as the Talmage Amendment, and this confirms the fears of southerners. Southerners had been suspecting that for for a long time that northerners were gonna try to ban slavery in the South. And this just confirms their fears. They're like, so southern senators kill that amendment. It's stripped out of the bill when the bill goes to the Senate. So and and now the South and the North are go kind of both up in arms. And um, this is where the great peacemaker, the guy who will, he will establish his reputation as kind of the great peacemaker, the guy who's ni- neither really a northerner or a southerner, but kind of what a quote westerner, you know, from Kentucky, uh, even though Kentucky is a slave state. Henry Clay is going to step in and is going to say, hey, wait a minute, everyone. Let's um, let's compromise. And so um, let's find a way where we can make both sides happy. And so this is his first um compromise, which is gonna save the Union from if its eventual, you know, being torn asunder, be eventually being torn asunder, um, uh, where he basically says, look, if Missouri is admitted as a slave state, um, Massachusetts actually owns some territory. If you can see my little pointer, it's it's pointing to um what was part of Massachusetts for a long time, uh, a territory up here, which of course was called Maine. And he said, then we'll add Maine in as a free state so we can keep the balance. And of course, this kind of puts what had formerly been just sort of a tradition into kind of formal practice where every time a slave state's admitted, a free state has to be admitted and vice versa. And the the question is, what will happen with the rest of Louisiana, the Louisiana Purchase Territory? Because northerners were afraid that if southerners kept moving into this, like, you would see slavery kind of go all the way up through the Great Plains, and they were. you would see slavery kind of go all the way up through the Great Plains, and they were very worried about what would happen up here. Uh because Missouri was kind of taking slavery kind of in the into the northern areas. So uh he said, if Missouri can come in as a slave state, then here's what the North gets. They get Maine as a free state and they get all of the area above this uh twenty six thirty parallel here to that will all be um coming, they will, this will all be free territory. So like the only states that can be created out of the rest of this territory are free states. And then south of that, we'll call it Arkansas Territory, that is where um more slave states can come in. And that kind of mollified the North. Um uh the North felt a little bit better. Uh but Thomas Jefferson, who was who was getting very old at this point, wrote, "This momentous question, like a fire bell in the night, awakened and filled me with terror. I considered it at once to be the the knell of the Union, meaning the death knell, like the the death toll, like a a bell being rung. Um it is hush indeed for the moment, but this is a reprieve only. It is not a final sentence." And Thomas Jefferson, um who would die right around the same time as John Adams, two, you know, the two great uh leaders of the early parties uh was right um uh that uh this was a um a reprieve only, that uh this compromise, while it saved the Union for a time, was was not solving this this question, which was becoming more and more divisive as time went by. So that, of course, is gonna lead us to the entrance of two new states into the Union. Um the state of Maine um is mostly uh the the population at the time was mostly considered or consisted of lumberjacks um and fishermen. And so uh it had reached the the threshold, even though it had been around since the time of the revolution uh as as part of Massachusetts, it had reached the the sixty thousand person. You guys may remember like how Massachusetts purchased uh Sir Fernando Gorges's um claim way back uh during the colonial times, but that's where they got control of Maine. Um but um uh i- in eighteen nineteen, and so they applied to be part of the Union as part of the Missouri Compromise. And they will be admitted to the Union as a twenty third state. Now, one of the interesting things about Maine is that they, and I think I have this on another slide as well. Um yeah, actually, I have a slide on the Webster Ashburton Treaty and the Aristocle War. Uh there will actually be a little war between the residents of Maine and Canada known as the Lumberjack War, uh but it's it's settled without any bloodshed uh in the Webster Ashburton Treaty of eighteen forty two. So when we get into the eighteen forties, we'll we'll cover that. But um that is Maine. And then, of course, to keep the balance, um Missouri also enters the Union. And uh of course, like we mentioned already, the gateway to the west, uh St. Louis uh is where Lewis and Clark had departed on their great journey, which most of which had been on the Missouri River. Um uh it was there and um it was Representative James Talmage of New York who had tried to gradually kill slavery with the Talmage Amendment, which had led to the big fight, which uh eventually um you know, was ended by the Missouri Compromise. Um.
You're cutting out again?
Oh, I'm cutting out. Yeah, I see this little thing that says your internet connection is unstable. I'll I'll hold off until I'm 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 a can everybody hear me now? Is?
Yes.
Yeah.
Am I not cutting out anymore?
No, you're not cutting out anymore.
Okay, good. Um so um basically, uh uh the, you know, uh it there would be no new slaves brought in and it would have given the children of slaves um freedom twenty five years from the date that statehood happened, but southern senators killed it, of course. And then they did actually add a little bit to uh Missouri a little later on with what was known as the Platt Purchase in the eighteen thirties. So um that's the state of Missouri, which comes in as our um, what is it, twenty third state? Uh uh in August of eighteen twenty one. All right, look at this. So this is like the full blown era of good feelings now. Like the Federalist Party is completely and utterly dead. Um and so it's kind of an interesting looking campaign slide here because there is no opposition, really. Um but Monroe basically uh thought that, you know, when uh you know, our founding fathers had warned in the Federalist Papers and and, you know, President Washington had warned in his 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 farewell address against the evils of political parties that we had finally overcome that. That was like a just a little hiccup. And now we were going to have kind of this unified country. Um and he he actually, I have a a quote there where he says, "I've always considered their existence to be a curse to the country." Um and so it really was mo- mostly now about personality. It was not about party affiliation anymore, which is going to, of course, lead to some interesting things as some strong personalities become uh more and more prominent. But um really, this is a very lackluster election because people just don't really you know, feel like they need to even go vote because they know who's gonna win. There is no opposition. So um there's a lot of um voter apathy uh in this election and um uh uh you know, the only controversy is whether or not to count Missouri's electoral votes. But since it's not gonna change anything, they decide to do it anyway, but even though they come in after just uh the electoral vote is counted on December third. And in the election of eighteen twenty, when the um votes are cast in the Electoral College, um two electors decide, um uh I'm sorry, well, one elector decide, he he casts one presidential and one vice presidential uh uh ballot uh for or he or he cast a vote on the ballot for um someone other than James Monroe. Does anybody know why? Why, even though it's really a foregone conclusion that James Monroe is gonna win, you know, uh by a landslide here, why would one person decide not to cast their votes for him? And instead to cast them for John Quincy Adams, who was Secretary of State, who didn't even ask for the votes to be cast for him. Zach?
Would it be, sorry, would it be just so that it's not like only one candidate, so it doesn't ruin what they had?
Hmm, that's a good guess, but no. Any other guesses?
Dang.
It's it's not an easy one to guess, actually.
Is it like a petty grudge against Monroe or something?
No. Um, all right, it it it's it's an honor to be the, to be chosen unanimously as as president uh by the Electoral College. It's 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 a distinct honor. And by the way, who who is the only president to have that honor in American history? Because.
Washington or?
George Washington, yeah, because of what, you know, the the his stature, his greatness, et cetera. So there was an elector who was just didn't want James Monroe to be put on the same kind of level as George Washington. They they didn't want him to have that honor as well. They wanted George Washington to be the only president to ever have the honor of being unanimously elected. And so that's why they cast their vote for John Quincy Adams and Richard Rush instead. So um that is the election of eighteen twenty. Um although it is kind of interesting that you'll see that John Quincy Adams will eventually kind of become the leader of this this kind of, you know, other group. Uh and then there, of course, there will be other leaders as well. Uh but that takes us into the realm of religion and um and uh and and some other things that we're gonna be discussing when we uh get into literature, et cetera. And I think we've already discussed this uh to a certain point. Uh so we talked about Unitarianism, right? Everybody knows what Unitarium is is. What is Unitarianism? It's something that emerged back when the Protestant Reformation happened. What is it?
Unitarianism is like the belief that Jesus wasn't fully divine, at least, or even divine at all.
He's just another.
And that's kind of controversial because most, like every other Christian group says, that's not Christianity if you don't recognize the Trinity.
Right. It it goes against the Nicene Creed, which is like considered to be like the confession of faith for all Christians. It kind of defines what Christianity is. Like Jesus is like a high-powered angel slash man, but he's still created. He's not, he's not part of the Godhead. Max, you had your hand up. Uh did you wanna add anything or do you have a question?
Oh, I was just gonna say it's uh their belief isn't just that Jesus isn't part of the Godhead. It's that it's all one thing, which inclu- would include like, what is it, the Holy Spirit, I guess.
Right, the Holy Spirit's not part of it either. Uh it is just God the Father, uh and that's it. One, one God. Um anybody, before we get into kind of the historical, you know, uh analysis of this, anybody have any thoughts on that? Like um where does that uh kind of come from? Uh is that, is that real Christianity? Isn't that real Christianity, et cetera? Um go ahead, Faith.
Okay, so that's not real Christianity, and I want to say that like right off the bat because um Christianity is the New Testament, uh where that's like the new covenant. And so um if you're saying that God is anything less than perfect, what needed to happen was a perfect, sinless sacrifice to be shed for the for the sins of the world. And if Jesus wasn't perfect, then that sacrifice wouldn't mean anything. And it's impossible to be perfect if you're not divine.
Okay, and.
So saying, yeah, saying Jesus is anything less than God is basically saying that his sacrifice didn't mean anything because it needed to be perfect.
Okay, and 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 like if it was a created creature who was being sacrificed, who was sacrificing themselves, it wouldn't be enough to atone for all the sins of humanity, right? So it has to be someone who is actually part of the Godhead, who is not just a created being, but is a, is actually divine. Um and again, this is getting into kind of the weeds of crystal Christian theology a little bit, but um it it's, you know, it's an important kind of um distinction because uh there are people who debate this, you know, are Unitarians Christian or aren't they? And does anyone know anything about kind of what direction the Unitarian Church has gone, kind of? Oh, I'm sorry. Does anyone know what direction the Unitarian Church has gone uh in the present day? Like what is their, what they call, they call themselves Unitarian blank, like.
I would answer that question, but I couldn't hear anything you were saying before.
Ah, okay, internet connection. Uh can you guys hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so a question again is, um what do the Unitarians call themselves nowadays? Like Unitarian blanks, Unitarian, it's not just Unitarian anymore, it's Unitarian, what else? All right, it's Unitarian Universalist, where they believe that all religions lead to the same thing and the the God who is in every religion is actually just different names for the same God. It's an attempt to what we call syncretize religions, which is problematic in a lot of ways because religions have some very stark differences, like, you know, where um like what we were just talking about, like, you know, Jesus being divine uh i- is a very stark difference from like, for instance, your your concept, your concept of Allah in 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 the Muslim world, et cetera. But anyway, there's a couple of universalizing religions like that. Um but uh uh Unitarians are like kind of in that direction now. But this is actually at the time, a liberal version of Christianity, like or the extreme liberal fringe. So you know, we've already talked about the deists. The deists aren't considered Christians, they're considered more agnostics. These guys here, like Joseph Stevens Buckminster, William Ellery Channing and Samuel Joseph May are also um kind of on that lib- that that very liberal fringe, where they're they're really kind of you know, questioning central core doctrines of the Christian faith. Um and uh so the Unitarians, like, you know, they kind of go into some territory that the Aryan heresy back in the ancient world, back, you know, at the time of Athanasius, et cetera, uh went where they basically say that um you can uh you can earn your way to heaven with good works. And um that Jesus wasn't actually a um uh, you know, part of the Godhead, he's a created creature. Um and so uh they they see God as very loving and is very accepting and is very wanting all people to reach salvation. Uh and they reject the kind of the the harshness of predestination. Uh they're they're very much in favor of free will. Um and Samuel Joseph May kind of put a lot of this into circulation with his periodical known as the Liberal Christian. Uh and it looks like we are out of time, so we will stop here for today. So thanks, everybody, for being a part. Uh and I will see you all in class on Tuesday. So if anybody has any questions or anything, uh feel free to ask. Otherwise, I'll end the meeting. All right, see you all later.